The Plainville Board of Education. Preparing Students for Success in a Changing Global Society.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We're first going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. White, can you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a few special presentations. Dr. Brummett?
I would like to invite Karen Vibbert from CAAB up to the podium for a very special presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Board members, for allowing me just a minute or two during your meeting. I know you have lots of important business to attend to, so I won't keep you very long. I would like to ask, with your permission, if Lynn Davis could join us?
I'm serving lunch.
Thank you. My name is Karen Vibbert. I am here on behalf of CAAB, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and it is my pleasure to present to the Plainville Board of Education and the Plainville School District the Award for Excellence for Educational Communications for Your Middle School Student Handbook. I did come last month, and I learned that Lynn was mostly responsible for putting this handbook together. Why don't you hold this nice award? Let me tell you a little bit about the judging criteria. It consists of clarity of message, image, and consistency. There are specific guidelines related to readability and editing, graphics, photography, type and typesetting, format, presentation, design, layout, and value of expenditure. Now, I am on a Board of Education. Value of expenditure should have been the first thing listed, trust me. As we all know, especially the Board members, effective communication with parents and other stakeholders is critical in a school district. It's a very important, very significant part of the district operation. It's important for the community to be aware of the exciting activities and events taking place in the schools every day. It's important for the parents to be aware of what's happening in the schools, what is required of the students, what is required of the parents, and what the school offers. So, this is very, this is really a prestigious award, and my congratulations to the Plainville School District and specifically to Lynn for all of her hard work for the Board of Education, for the Bristol-Plainville School. (APPLAUSE). Lynn usually takes the picture, but I just asked her to turn around. (LAUGHING).
Mr. Bryan, don't you join us too, because you're involved. This is the middle school principal. We'd like you to sit.
Absolutely. You better get ready for that job. Oh, it's very nice to meet you, Sue.
Nice to meet you, too.
I'll take the package.
Well, congratulations to you. Thank you for all of your hard work. Tonight, I'd also like to mention another CAAB award, which will be presented to two students who, because, of course, they are extremely busy and involved in a million things, will not be here this evening, but I'm going to ask Mr. Medic to accept these awards on their behalf.
Alexis.
Oh, my goodness.
Alexis.
All right, then Alexis can come up first. Alexa St. Jean. Alexa is currently a Plainville High School senior and a member of the National Honor Society, the Science Honor Society, and the Spanish Honor Society. Alexa is ranked 31st in the class of 2017. She has taken part in dance training for over 14 years outside of school. Alexa works at the Wheeler Regional Family YMCA of Plainville and also works as a dance instructor at a local studio. Alexa plans to attend Central Connecticut State University in the fall. Alexa's leadership extends to an outside fundraiser that she had led for the past two years when her newborn cousin was diagnosed with hypoplastic left heart syndrome. Alexa organized a Zumba-thon fundraiser in her cousin's honor. Sadly, her cousin passed away four days after the fundraiser. Alexa facilitated a donation of more than $3,000 to Boston Children's Hospital, and as a follow-up, this year, Alexa continues to raise funds in her cousin's honor and through the second annual fundraiser was able to donate more than $1,500 to national and regional heart foundations. So, because of these amazing accomplishments, you're hereby presented with the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, better known as CAAB, Student Leadership Award. And I'd like to ask Andrea Saunders to come up. Congratulations. (APPLAUSE). All right, and I believe our second student honoree is not here this evening. Want to make sure I'm not wrong about that? Jonathan Olson?
Parents.
Come on up, parents.
Mom and dad.
Mom and dad. We always know that behind every strong student is a strong mom and dad. So, let me tell you what Jonathan Olson has done. Jonathan is currently a senior at Plainville High School. Jonathan is a four-year member of the football and baseball teams, serving as captain of the football team during the fall. Jonathan is a member of the National Honor Society, the Science Honor Society, and the Spanish Honor Society. Jonathan is ranked seventh in the class of 2017. Jonathan is a member of the band and jazz band. Jonathan works at the Wheeler Regional Family YMCA of Plainville. Jonathan plans to attend the University of New Hampshire in the fall. He has volunteered throughout Plainville for various organizations such as the PHS College Fair, the Pettit Family Foundation Annual Road Race, the St. Dominic's Church Pancake Breakfast. In addition, he served as a counselor in training at the local YMCA summer camp. He also has read to students at Linden School. In total, Jonathan has amassed more than 190 hours of community service during his time at Plainville High School. It's amazing. Because of all of these accomplishments and many, many more, Jonathan is also awarded the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Student Leadership Award. Mom and dad are going to accept it on his behalf. Congratulations. (APPLAUSE). Last but not least, for our awards this evening, I would like to invite to the podium Ms. Michaela Moore, preschool teacher at Linden, and she has been nominated as an everyday hero by Joanna Kopchik. I promised her I'd do, she's really known as Ms. Kay, which is what I probably should have said. But come on up to both Ms. Kay and Mrs. Moore. Let me tell you what Joanna said about Ms. Moore. "I would like to take this opportunity to nominate Michaela Moore, preschool teacher at Linden, as an everyday hero. Michaela's positive attitude, rigor, and passion for teaching and learning make her an inspiration to me as a first-year teacher. Michaela often stays late after school to work on her lesson plans, classroom, and activities, so that her students are engaged in learning throughout the entire school day. Within each unit, her classroom transforms into a beautiful learning environment related to the theme of the unit. Currently, she has created a flower shop in her classroom, and students are engaged in creating bouquets of flowers that she purchased, selling them in their store, and possibly even gifting them to another student." And I was in there last week, I got a flower. "This purposeful play teaches her students life lessons such as social skills, the value of money, and all different types of careers. She's also had a bakery. She's also sure to also include manipulatives and tools of all shapes and sizes for her variety of learners. Michaela's class is made up of 18 four-year-olds with many different abilities and needs. This is an impressive number of students for such a young class with only one teacher and one paraprofessional, but Michaela loves every one of them as if they were her own. She also has her own three-year-old son, Keegan, and to whom she is a wonderful mother. Michaela is able to balance what she does in her classroom with her family life seamlessly. It is also worth noting that preschool teachers from across other districts have been invited to come observe Michaela's teaching for her structure, data keeping, and overall environment, as it can be considered an exemplar. While I might not be qualified to say so, though you are, as being a product of Plainville Schools myself allows me to confidently say that Plainville has a fantastic staff from elementary all the way to the high school level. Michaela is by far the most hard-working and dedicated educator that I have seen in all the time I've spent in my undergrad work through CCSU, student teaching and actual teaching. I, and others that work with her, feel that Michaela deserves recognition for her enthusiasm and motivation to create learners that are truly ready for kindergarten and beyond." So, on behalf of the district, we'd like to give you an Everyday Hero Award. Congratulations. (APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. Okay, next, we just have a couple of sets of minutes for approval. Can I get a motion for A?
Motion to approve minutes of the April 17, 2017 Regular Business Meeting of the Board of Education.
Second the motion.
I have a first and a second. Any corrections or additions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next?
Madam Chairman, I request that we approve the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting, May 1st, which was a policy subcommittee meeting.
Second. All right, I have a first and a second. Any additions or corrections? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the Board of Education, you can just step up to the podium, state your name and address. Anyone? Okay. Thank you. All right, next, we have our council liaison, Mrs. Puglisi.
Good evening, Kathy Puglisi, 50, West Broad Street. I have a couple of items. I was not here last month in light of the fact that our schedule is conflicted and we were working on our budget, so a couple of things that we have discussed in the past. One item that has been talked about over the past few months has been the water quality in Plainville. There were a variety of complaints that the town was made aware of regarding water quality in a number of different locations across the town. The town had an initial meeting with representatives from the Department of Public Health along with the water company, and at that meeting, it was suggested that water samples be taken from a number of locations within Plainville. Specifically, they asked that water samples be taken from all of the schools in Plainville as well. All of that information has been gathered, and there's going to be a presentation of the analysis of the testing at the middle school of Plainville on June 8th at 7:00 PM. This is open to the public, so anybody that's interested in the water quality issues that have been questioned, and we're going to learn a little bit more about what's out there, you're certainly welcome to join us at the middle school of Plainville on June 8th. Other items I have, our street paving program is underway once again. There are several streets on the schedule. You've probably already seen some of them closed off. I know there's some inconvenience to that, but the end result, I think, is worthwhile, so that will continue throughout the summer. Just another iteration of what we already know, our budget passed delightedly on the first vote. Seventy-two percent of those that voted for the town budget voted yes. Sixty-seven percent of the Board of Education budget voted yes as well. So, we are very happy that that happened. The message to us is that the citizens of Plainville are happy with what's happening financially in the town. We still have a few issues that are going to be, yet to be determined, one of which is our mill rate, and as we all know, the state of Connecticut is far from having their budget completed. There are a number of things that could affect the town of Plainville and every other town in the state, and we won't know that for some time to come. I've actually heard rumoring that they may not approve the budget until summer or early fall. That's a little too late for us to take action, no, we have to do. So, we will be setting our mill rate sometime, I suspect, in the June timeframe. We need to get this done so that the bills can go out for July 1st, so we're kind of trying to figure out as best we can. That mill rate will be set on the budget that was passed and that which we currently know. If anything changes thereafter, we will have to get together again and come up with some solutions, but it is a difficult thing to do, to prepare a financial outlook when you don't have all the information. So, we have done the best we can with what we know right now. Our citizens have approved our expenditures. Now, it's up to the town council to decide on the mill rate, and that will happen sometime late May or early June, but we don't have a lot of time to wait to do that as well. As you know, the school building projects had a lovely public hearing at Wheeler School recently. This past week, the town council voted to send the school building project to referendum for June 6th. The council also voted to fund expenditures related to the referendum. So, what that is, is there's a few things that have to happen to prepare for the referendum, one of which is a mailing that will go out to all taxpayers explaining what the referendum is about. It's a very neutral piece of material, just explaining what the projects are, what the impact on our financial situation will be. So, the town council voted to approve the expenditures to take care of that, as well as some other additional expenditures that occur whenever a referendum needs to take place. So, the Wheeler School referendum and the high school parking lot are going out to vote. It will be in the hands of the voters to decide what we should do. We are stressing that it's very important that everybody participate. Please have your neighbors, your family, your friends. These things have to be taken care of. Wheeler School has been in need of upgrading for many, many years. We believe the plan is a good one, and it will take care of the school for decades to come. So, I am putting the public service announcement out tonight. Please get everybody to join in and help us get this passed in June. And that is all. I'll take questions if anybody has any.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you very much, Kathy. All right, next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Brummett?
Thank you. I would like to invite Jill O'Brien up to the podium. Jill will provide us with an overview of our adult education programs, and she will follow quickly thereafter by Donna Cavalero of our Family Resource Center. As you know, the Family Resource Center and the Adult Ed Program have a relationship with a PIP program, among other things, and I think tonight you'll find both of them very passionate about what they do, and it's very interesting because while Donna deals with the very youngest folks entering into our district, Jill deals with folks that are on the opposite and heading into an adult education program. And following Donna's presentation, we do have a few parents that have offered to speak tonight as to some of the benefits they've realized from our Family Resource Center. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jill O'Brien.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett, and thank you, Board of Education, for allowing me the opportunity to share with you some updates on our program. There are 1,421 residents in Plainville without a high school diploma, and there are 274 who do not speak English well. We are assisting this population with adult education programs, and currently, there are 91 students enrolled. Typically, there are more female students than males. Ages 25 to 44 is the most populated range. Diploma programs draw the most enrollments. Student goals are to improve basic skills and to progress toward a diploma. Over half are unemployed, and almost half have children. This slide speaks for itself and really illustrates our diverse student population. Now, let's hear from Jonathan Ramirez. He's a 34-year-old student who will graduate this June.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Jonathan Ramirez Bakke. I currently live in Plainville, Connecticut, and I want to tell you a little bit from my experience here at high school, at the Plainville High School and the credit diploma program. My experience here was amazing. I was thinking for a period, a long time, how to finish the high school eventually in any time, and I ran into this high school staff, and they're really amazing. They helped me a lot in this program. They helped me through the whole period of finishing the high school diploma. My experience was totally amazing. The teachers, they help you. They work with you in the daily basic. When you come to school, you're hands-on, you learn, they work with you one by one. If you have difficulty learning or working with a lot of groups, a lot of people, they more than willing to help you in one-on-one. I would recommend it because in this time, I would suggest, I would think it's really hard. I'm 34 years old, and it's not easy to finish. When I first heard about this program, I tried it, and the beginning was spectacle, but really, really, it's amazing. I recommend it. I finished. I'm about to graduate in June 15th, and I invite you to try it if you have the will and you have the time to do it, do it. It's never too late. I recommend it. Have a wonderful night, and thank you.
Okay. In addition to the mandated programs, we offer enrichment courses, too. They're self-sustained. They're open to students and residents that are age 16 years old and over, and they're offered for a small-fee evenings, and we strive to meet the needs of the community by offering a variety of courses. Last year, registrations totaled 147. This spring, we offered John Adams Pizza, a Movie, and a History Lesson. This was due to a grant from the Elizabeth H. Norton Trust Fund, a $600 grant, and 27 students attended. We held this at the Plainville Public Library, and Douglas Lord, the director, was kind enough to compile a book list to complement our program. The students were exposed to the library's vast materials, and one student received his library card for the first time. Community connections are made throughout the year. In the summer, there are programs off-site, like ESL programs at the Plainville Community Food Pantry, and Saturdays, we offer pre-GED, or ABE, and GED classes at the Plainville Public Library. We were fortunate to receive many donations from area businesses, too, to support our excellent attendance program, where students would get a gift card if they attended school without missing one day for a whole month. In each fall, students select a recipient for our holiday gift drive. This year, they selected children recovering from surgery from the Connecticut Children's Medical Center, and we delivered two giant boxes of toys there. This past fall, we offered Safe Manager Training Program. Thanks to the Plainville Community Fund, too, at the Main Street Community Foundation, 16 scholarships went to Plainville residents. Each month, we set up an information table at God's Grocery Store. It's at the SDA Church in Plainville. It's one of the largest food distribution sites in the state, and we met with several visitors and spread the word about our free mandated programs. Last December, Mrs. Plord passed away, and her family contacted me to set up an adult education clothing distribution closet for students. They provided almost $3,000 in donations of interview and career attire. In addition, they gave $500 for setup supplies. We are using this closet as a workshop resource for interview etiquette now, and inventory will be assessed annually. After receiving clothes, students are asked to write a thank-you note to Mr. Plord, husband of the deceased, and here is an example of a note. In closing, I would like to invite you to save the date. Our graduation and awards ceremony will take place on June 8th here at the auditorium of the high school, and Liberty Bake will be on hand to distribute $2,000 worth of scholarships to graduating students. And at this time, I would like to ask Donna Cavalero to approach the podium. Donna and I collaborate to offer adult education classes in the morning at Linden Street School through a federally funded PIP grant. While the parents are in adult education classes, their children are right across the hall, engaged in structured play at the Plainville Family Resource Network.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to have Malagros approach with her mom, Maria. Malagros is 20 months old, and she attends the Family Resource Center while her mom is in class, and she has a little something for you that the children created at Plainville Family Resource Network.
(LAUGHING).
She's a flower.
She's got flowers.
She's saying, "They're so pretty, I want to keep them."
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sweetheart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's so cute.
She's looking, she's saying, "They're so pretty, I want to keep them."
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sweetheart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We get flowers, too.
This must be my lucky day.
She's got it.
Thank you.
Malagros is with Carmen Province, and she's our bilingual parent educator for our family literacy program. And joining Maria Samaniego this evening is Marta Cruz, and she's our computer specialist for our Family Resource Network.
Good evening. My name is Maria Samaniego. I am from Ecuador. I have lived in the United States for 10 years. I live in Bristol. Two years ago, a friend told me about a program in Plating that offered English classes. I told her that it was going to be difficult for me to attend them because of my baby. She explained that the ladies from the program could take care of my girl while I was in class. This was music to my ears. I registered in the program, and I have been attending classes, learning more English each day. My daughter, who is 20 months old...
Literacy Program. And joining Maria Samaniego this evening is Marta Cruz and she's our computer specialist for our Family Resource Network.
Good evening. My name is Maria Samaniego. I am from Ecuador. I have lived in the United States for 10 years. I live in Bristol. Two years ago, a friend told me about a program in Plainville that offered English classes. I told her that it was going to be difficult for me to attend them because of my baby. She explained that the ladies from the program could take care of my girl while I was in class. This was music to my ears. I registered in the program and I have been attending classes, learning more English each day. My daughter, who is 20 months old, has been enjoying herself in the playground. The ladies in the program are very helpful and support of my family. Learning English has been very useful in my daily life. The program is very important and necessary for people like me who wants to learn the language I integrate into our communities. It is also very important for my children who are getting the support they need during their early years. For that, I want to say thank you. Good night.
Thank you so much, Maria, for sharing your story. I'm Donna Cavallaro, the Coordinator of Plainville Family Resource Network, located at Linden Street School since 1997. And in September, we will celebrate our 20th year in Plainville. The Connecticut Family Resource Center concept established in 1988 promotes comprehensive, integrated, community-based systems of family support and child development services located in public school buildings. Plainville Family Resource Network provides access within a community to a broad continuum of early childhood and family support services. Throughout Connecticut, there are 74 sites in 41 school districts. Family Resource Centers are funded through a competitive grant through the state of Connecticut requiring the completion of seven service components through direct service or collaborations within the community, enabling FRCs to customize programming specific to the needs of the community. Family Resource Centers provide a strong foundation for learning through a variety of programs and services that provide parents with information, support, encouragement for the optimal development of their children during these crucial early years. To highlight a few of the services, we have play and learn groups four times a week, three are in the morning, and one evening program on Monday nights. They are literacy-based, parent and child interactive sessions focusing on school readiness skills, learning through Play With a Purpose. We also have a Parents' Teachers Home Visitation Program and our staff is certified in nationally-recognized Parents' Teachers Strength-Based Program. Personal visits include regular developmental screenings to monitor child development and refer for additional support when needed. We also have a very highly-attended Conscious Discipline Evening Workshop. It's a seven-week self-regulation program that integrates social-emotional learning and discipline. It is based on current brain research and empowers adults and children to transform conflicts into opportunities to learn critical life skills. And as we spoke about earlier, we have our Adult Education component that is provided through a Family Literacy Grant and PFRN and the Adult Education collaborate to offer these services. The PFRN clientele extends to all children and all families in Plainville. Our current enrollment, 2016-17, is 139 parents and adults, 56 infant toddlers, 56 preschoolers, and four school-aged children with a total of 255. Priority is given to Plainville families with obvious at-risk factors. It must be noted that seemingly typical families may have needs or risks that not always are immediately apparent. Plainville's at-risk families consist of those who are at or below state or federal poverty levels, those without a high school diploma, families that English is not their primary language, and single-parent households. Recruitment is driven by connections made within our school system, the Plainville community at large, and state and local agencies. Our past and present clientele are the most substantial factors in our retention and growth. These are just a few pictures of our young children in action. We created Soaring Eagles Program in 2014 to support Plainville Community Schools' four-year-old Pre-K initiative. This unique program is for three-year-olds and their parents and focuses on social-emotional competence and parental involvement. Two important aspects that research has shown increases school readiness and academic success. Connecticut Early Learning and Development Standards are the foundation of our weekly lesson plans. The standards promote equity for all children in high-quality learning experiences. Through group circle time lessons, facilitated play sequences, songs, stories, and small group interaction, students learn to identify their feelings and increase skills of self-regulation. Special events include family field trips to the farm, the airport, the firehouse, Nazos, et cetera. We also have onsite visitors such as music programs, a drumming circle, a local police officer, dental hygienist, and eye doctor. We also provide professional development opportunities for staff and childcare providers, including a presentation from the National Alliance on Mental Illness, giving specific information on identifying the early warning signs of mental illness and available community resources. We are very excited about the Fourth Annual Family Fest event coming up on May 20th from 10:30 to 3:30 at our new location behind Linden Street School. This free event provides businesses, organizations, and clubs the opportunity to highlight what they offer while celebrating our children. Each participating agency or business attending will offer a free activity for children. Some of the many offerings include a touch-a-chalk event, a PHS senior, Katerina Labella, and her race car, that will be a photo op, mobile petting zoo, carnival games, a DJ, and many special guests, including Elsa and Anna from the movie Frozen. Also, every child receives a free book. We are very thankful for Wheeler, Toflon, and Linden PTOs who have been very generous with financial support and excited to have many PHS students volunteering for the day. You're all invited and we hope to see you there for priceless family fun. Through the years, we have established and continue to maintain strong connections with many community collaborators. These collaborations enable us to offer diverse programming for Plainville families. PFRN is predominantly funded by a grant from the State Department of Education. We have been virtually level-funded at just over $100,000 since 1997, with the exception of decreases due to the governor's 5% rescission authority. This year, we have been reduced by $6,500 to date. And we are facing much larger cuts in next year's budget with proposals ranging from 25% to 50% decrease in budgets. On a positive note, during the recent appropriation budget hearings at the Capitol, it was reported that FRCs had the most testimonies and we are continued to advocate by hosting an ice cream social at the Capitol this Wednesday from 11:00 to 1:00 in support of FRCs throughout Connecticut, and everyone is invited. In addition to state funding, PFRN is grateful for funding provided by Plainville Community Schools and the ongoing support from the district. This truly has enabled us to shine among our peers and has allowed the program to flourish for Plainville families. The Community Foundation of Greater New Britain has also been a huge supporter of PFRN programming as part of their First Year's First Initiative. We are grateful for the grants received throughout the years. At this time, I'd like to introduce some families who would like to express what PFRN means to them. Michelle Capot, if you would like to come up. Michelle has Cooper, who attends our programs at four years old, and Emily at three months.
Good evening, members of the board, Plainville Family Resource Network, and other guests. I'm a 2001 graduate of Plainville High School and am now a Plainville parent of a four-year-old son and a newborn daughter. As a product of Plainville Community Schools, I would like to see my children have the same opportunities or more that I had. The educational foundation that Plainville laid within me allowed me to obtain a Master of Business Administration degree, so I believe in the power of education. I learned about Plainville Family Resource Network at the Plainville Family Festival in 2015. I started attending the Monday evening play and learn group after work that summer with my son, who was two and a half at the time. Branching off of that, he has participated in the Family Resource Network for a number of years in two ways. My children do not attend a daycare center, so I needed a way to get my son socialized with his peers. The play and learn group was an incredibly positive experience for both my son and I. He was able to socialize with other children while learning and I was able to connect with other Plainville parents whom I will be seeing for the next 18 years. Through the Plainville Play and Learn Group, I learned about Soaring Eagles. My son is a winter baby and when he turned three, they happened to have an opening and invited him into the class for the last half of the school year. This was once again a very positive experience as it prepared him for a school setting. He learned about sitting in a circle with friends but having to pay attention to teachers. He also picked up other classroom etiquette such as waiting his turn and raising his hand. In addition, he learned concepts like name recognition, months, seasons, colors, shapes, and so on. I was shocked when my three-year-old could pick out his name from a list of many others after only two classes at Soaring Eagles. I also learned that I am not cut out to be a teacher, as I couldn't teach him colors to save my life. But he picked them up rather quickly in Soaring Eagles. I was so thankful for this program that I asked if he could attend in the 2016-2017 school year as well, and I've seen my son flourish in this class. I really want the Plainville Family Resource Network to continue so my daughter can benefit from these important school readiness programs, building the foundation for future school success. I'd like to thank you for your time and I hope the Plainville Family Resource Network will continue to receive the support from the Board of Education, the community, and the State Department of Education.
Thank you, Michelle. I would like to invite Kylie Sepko up. She has a daughter, Katja, who's five, and Darren, three.
Hello, my name is Kylie Sepko. Good evening. I discovered the playgroup when my daughter was about one and a half and my son was a couple months away from coming. It was invaluable when I first arrived, having a then-two-year-old and a newborn. I was able to find areas that he could play in, the little one, and things for her to do as well. My daughter was starting to be able to sit through circle. The first, when she was only a year and a half, she couldn't sit at circle. She didn't really have the attention span for it, but by the time she was in her twos, she could sit for circle. But my son, of course, being a baby, could not. But my daughter was comfortable enough with the kind ladies and the teachers at playgroup that she was quite comfortable with mommy at the back of the room taking care of Darren. I asked my children what they thought was important from playgroup and they both said learning to share and playing with others. And I also found that it was helpful in seeing the different stages in child development. So first, my daughter played next to other children, then she played with other children. And there's different activities for every level from newborn up through age five there. Just the other week, we borrowed a puzzle on rhyming words because my daughter is very interested in reading and rhyming words. And so that was something we did not have at home. We were able to borrow it for two weeks. And she even made a book of all the words after she was done with it before we returned it. So she made full use of those two weeks. We've also borrowed a number of books over the time that we've been there. One big benefit to the playgroup is that it does build a sense of community, as Michelle also mentioned. I have seen that as my children are playing at playgroup, maybe outside in the hall for gross motor skills at Soaring Eagles, when the larger kids walk by from the preschool, a couple of them actually kind of waved to me because they remember me from my daughter being in playgroup with them. And now I've noticed when I go to the pancake breakfast at Wheeler, I know plenty of other parents there because we were all parents at playgroup together. So between the library and playgroup, it was actually a big factor in us deciding to stay in Plainville. We were looking around at other houses. Our house is kind of small, but we were in the community in Plainville and there were so many other benefits that we found here. The teachers are quite dedicated to helping the children. They're very passionate about it. Sometimes, it can almost be refreshing to see from their eyes the way you're, how they appreciate your child all over again, kind of reminds of the parent as well. And they also, they just have a special interest in the pricelessness of childhood, which is contagious. They're also available for extraparental questions at any time. I did once call Donna outside of playgroup time when my daughter was being particularly precocious and she also took a few moments for me. So they're just really always there for parents. There's questionnaires that help you keep track of your child's development. Sometimes those are just fun because they may, for the little baby stages, you might not have thought of trying that yet. So it has all these, if you put some marbles in a plastic cup, will the child try and get them out? For example, I hadn't tried that yet. So we got to try all sorts of new things. It gives new ideas on different stages of development. Both my children did attend the Soaring Eagles class. My son kind of twice because he thinks whatever big sister does is great. So he was an eaglet. He was allowed to sit in circle next to her during her year. And this year, he was his full eagle himself. And it's actually quite adorable. My daughter remembers everything that they did. And on Thursdays, they talk about what they did at gross motor skills at dinnertime. And they look forward to the different, many of the activities have been the same, the crafts have been the same, so they always talk about how it's come along this year and what stage they're at. And I also was thankful that it prepared my son for school. He was able to learn how to sit at circle without me this year and able to do it in a comfortable manner instead of just sending him off. We had a couple first classes where I was able to sit with him. And then now by the end of the year, he doesn't even ask for me anymore. He just goes off on his own. He knows his name, he knows his place in circle. And he doesn't even really look for me, even if I decide to stay inside the classroom during gross motor skills because sometimes that allows him to focus better on the class. So we have found many benefits to the playgroup for a sense of community, for the learning, for the developmental aspects for my children, and I'm very grateful for it. I hope that it remains here for all my children's classmates in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kylie. At this point, we'd like to ask Sarah Wartonic to come up. Sarah's children did attend. They're currently in grade three, in grade one. But now Sarah does bring a two-year-old named Bryce as she watches him during the day.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Sarah Wartonic and I am here with my family to share my story about the Plainville Family Resource Network. My husband Nick and I became part of the PFRN family in 2009. As parents who worked opposite shifts, we were lucky to be able to keep our children at home with us instead of daycare. Although we were blessed with this opportunity, we knew the importance of having our children socialize with other peers their age and preparing them for preschool. We didn't know how to achieve this without sending them to daycare because we weren't originally from Plainville. We talked with a friend who lived in town and they told us about this wonderful program called Plainville Family Resource Network. We decided to give it a try and here we were, so happy that we did. My husband would take my sons during the day and I would attend the night classes. It was wonderful. The boys were able to play with other children their age and get the socialization they needed, while Nick and I met with new parents and interacted with people who were going through the same parental woes we were. It was a great outlet for everyone. Being a part of the PFRN family gave us somewhere we could go for guidance and support. The staff was so welcoming and warm that we felt safe and knew we had a place to turn if we needed advice or help. PFRN is not just a place where children go to play. It is a great way for children to learn the fundamental skills they need to prepare for preschool while providing adults with resources to help them along with their parenting journey. I had the opportunity to take one of the night courses offered called Conscious Discipline. It was a great seminar that gave me many tools to use in raising my sons. This is just one of the numerous informational classes that are provided through this wonderful program. The field trips they offer were also great as well. My boys love going to the farm into Indian Rock. They were both great educational experiences for them. When my boys entered grade school... When my boys entered grade school and we were no longer able to go to playgroup, we were sad. We had become so close with the staff, and the boys really missed going. We would see the ladies in the halls at school, and they would stop to catch up. They would always ask us about our lives and how the boys were doing in school. It wasn't until last year when I became a nanny for a little boy named Bryce that I was reunited with the PFRN family. I knew I needed something productive to do with him during the day and to teach him. That's when I thought, how great would it be to bring him to playgroup? We started back in September, and we were once again welcomed with open arms. Bryce absolutely loves it. He asks me every day if we were going to playgroup. He sings a song from Circle Time, and he asks about the teachers and his friends. He truly loves it, just like my boys did. One of the greatest benefits I feel I have received from being a part of PFRN are the relationships that I have made. By joining the playgroup, I was able to meet a lot of people that would become part of my everyday life. I got to know the staff in the school by seeing them on a regular basis, and it helped us to feel comfortable. I learned about the preschool screening and other important things I may not have had it not been for PFRN. Because of them, I was able to facilitate relationships with people from the start, making the transition to school much smoother for myself and my boys. It also made it easier for me to become involved with the school and joining groups such as the PTO, which I am now the president of. I have found a place where I belong, and it is all because of the relationships I have formed even before my child's children began school. In closing, I know that we are just one of the multiple families who have shared many positive experiences from being a part of the PFRN family. Please continue to fund this wonderful program that has touched so many people's lives and will continue to provide so much more to families in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. And lastly, if I could ask Dr. Alex Merkelov to come up.
Hello, and thank you. So I've been giving some thought about how to best share with you what I feel is the greatest value of this program, and I could share data with you about the benefits of early childhood education. I could share with you about how my daughter really enjoys the program and how she spends time playing with other kids, bumping heads, crying, laughing, and doing all the things that kids do. But I really want to share with you a story that I think better summarizes the importance of this program that I recently observed at a party. So a friend of mine, who's very competitive, was preparing his son for a birthday party. He was turning four years old, and it was going to be a pool party, and he really wanted his son to jump in the pool and swim ahead of other kids, okay? So what he did was, he hired, he took his son, and he hired a coach to train him how to swim. And this is a three-and-a-half-year-old child. So he bought the equipment, floaters, and everything else. And about a month and a half of this, and there was no progress. In fact, his son wasn't even interested. I mean, he was, initially was getting in the water, but then he started getting upset, and he wasn't even going close to the water. So then my friend decided that he was going to do other things, bribe him, candy. Then he tried even sort of a little bit of shaming, "Look, girls are swimming, why aren't you," et cetera. None of those things worked. Then he hired a professional eighteen-year-old lifeguard to train him how to swim, okay? It was a complete disaster. Anyway, along comes the party. So I'm at the party, a few people are at the party, and my friend showed up late. And I'm looking at the scene, and I couldn't believe this. So here's what I'm witnessing. His son, who's basically three and a half years old, about, you know, two months later from this training of swimming, is on the deep end of the pool, and he jumps in, okay? His dad is running. I mean, he's running across the lawn, he's taking off his shoes, about to dive into the pool, okay? His son swims across the pool, comes out on the other side, and he couldn't believe it. He learned how to swim in that one session at the three-hour party. So we both come up to the child, and we ask him, "I don't understand, how did you do this? How did you learn to swim in three hours?" Oh, he's like, "It's easy. I saw other kids doing it." So you see my point? Kids, right, learn by spending time with other kids, do you understand? Just like we learn by spending time with other adults. I can try to set the best possible example of my daughter, but she just won't listen to me, okay? She wants to hang out with other three-year-olds, okay? And that's where they really learn. And so these programs, this program is so powerful because it allows them, an hour and a half, three times a week, to spend time together, right? And the growth is exponential, do you see? So I just hope that this program continues, and I'm harassing all the state people responsible to keep this thing going, and I hope that you will help me with this effort. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I thank all the parents for sharing the stories. I love hearing all the comments from you. In closing, I would like to extend a sincere thank you to the members of the Board of Education, Principal Schuh, Dr., sorry, Mr. Elderstein, Mr. Lookpage, and Dr. Brummett for the continued support and guidance they have given me throughout the years. Does the board have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Donna? I just wanted to make just a statement. I saw you the night you were testifying. I didn't actually get to hear what you said, but Dr. Brummett and I, and Nicole were in another room, and you're right, half the people that spoke were from the Family Resource Center. So I hope that our representatives are really listening, and hopefully you had some people like this that shared these wonderful stories to let them know that these are the people that we help and that we need to continue to do that.
We're trying to do that, and like I said, we're going to be at the Capitol on Wednesday for seventy-four of us, so we're hoping to have a huge, huge turnout for that. We're having an ice cream social, and we've invited all the legislators to come, so thank you.
We know they're up there because I've gotten invitations that they're going to be up there having meetings about the budget, so hopefully that's definitely on their agenda.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Donna.
I just want to thank Donna for her amazing enthusiasm, and our parents who took the time out of their busy schedules to speak on behalf of the program. I have visited so many times, and it just does wonders for our children and the staff. They are so dedicated and tirelessly dedicated to all the work that they do. I would invite, if I may, all the folks that attended on behalf of the Family Resource Center to stand in front of our picture area for a little group photo, if we might. And then it's time to go.
Now she wants to sit down.
of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Tuanne Graham Douglas, the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator. They are our small but mighty curriculum team, and they do amazing work with both professional development and, tonight, they're also going to speak about our new state accountability system. So they have quite a bit to share, and I'm thrilled to introduce them to you, and on with the presentation.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. We have many news in the curriculum office. We're just going to present a few today. We are just going to give you information, and I apologize in advance, our slides are very full. They contain a ton of information. We're not going to go through all the information, but if at any point you have any questions, doubts, comments, or anything you would like to say, please feel free to stop us in the moment and ask any questions or say anything that you need to say, because it's a lot of information. If after tonight you have any other questions, doubts, comments, or anything, we welcome the opportunity to just sit one-on-one, or two-on-one, or two-on-four, or whatever, and just go over the information and further explain all the information that we have. So we're going to start with the March Professional Development. This was my second rodeo, so I felt much better planning for this activity. We had plenty of sessions. We had fifteen in the morning and thirteen in the afternoon. But unlike other professional developments, we have come to understand and learn that there's needs that all teachers in the Plainville school systems have. So this time, with some needs from the middle school and the high school for students that might have mental health issues or needs, we decided to invite Dr. Irene Abramovich to present to the whole faculty on a spotlight on mental illness and the implications for Plainville. So the faculty had an opportunity to come together and have one-hour presentation and then a menu after that. We had five breakout sessions afterwards, and about ninety-eight people selected those five breakout sessions, the different ones, and they attended. So it was the beginning and the start to have an honest conversation about mental illness, anxiety, childhood trauma, and any of that, and it will probably continue in subsequent professional development. There were also simultaneously other presentations throughout the morning that people were able to choose with technology, literacy strategies, and assessment instruction to learn other things as well. So it was a very full day and a very successful day. So that was March. We continue with our professional learning communities. We are in year two, and at the middle of the year, I instructed leaders, the ILs, to go back to their respective groups and ask the group, "How are the PLCs working? What are the benefits? What are the challenges?" And the list that you see here, there is two different slides of benefits and of challenges, describe exactly what the people said about professional learning communities. Unanimously, people are very, very appreciative of the time that they have, more or less twice a month or eleven times a year, to come together, to share experiences, to talk about student learning, to talk about challenges in the classroom, to talk about assessment, to talk about how to help students. So they really have a dedicated time to do that, and they're finally meeting colleagues from other schools and from other buildings that before they never had the opportunity to sit together. So the benefits are many, you can read them, but it is a very, very happy event, and the t-shirts are going on. Of course, there's also some challenges, and Tuanne's going to explain some.
I'm the lucky one, I get the challenges. Good evening, and thank you so much for having us. As Rosa mentioned, people are appreciative of having the time to work together with their teams. As Rick Dufour, the PLC guru, stated about the purpose of a PLC, "The very essence of a learning community is a focus and a commitment to the learning of each student. When a school or district functions as a PLC, educators within the organization embrace high levels of learning for all students as both the reason the organization exists and the fundamental responsibility of those who work within it. The impact of the Plainville PLC model on teaching and learning has been phenomenal, and we have seen growth in instructional focus and learning outcomes. Through video visitation and instructional rounds, the process by which we observe, discuss, and analyze learning and teaching, that process has revealed aligning in the teaching practices, more alignment in instructional tools, increased responsiveness to the needs of all students, and increased student learning. The PLCs operate under the assumption that the key to improve learning for students is this continuous job-embedded learning for educators, and PLCs, teachers share their practice, and they learn from one another. In order for a PLC to be effective, the participants must have and actually use their voice and see the value in the time spent collaborating. In order to maintain momentum, we felt it was important for us to address any roadblocks and consider those roadblocks as opportunities. Those who took the survey identified the areas that you see here. For example, one of the areas was aligning the PLC dates with the dates that we actually administer assessments and get the results. So to remove this roadblock, we have taken a look at the assessment calendar and worked to ensure that the data can be reviewed by grade-level PLC teams as soon as possible. Educators in a PLC benefit from clarity regarding their shared purpose and collective commitment to help move student learning in the desired direction. So when time to plan for and coordinate direction surface as a challenge, we recognize the need to address it immediately. To this end, more time has been allotted during many summit meetings for teams to meet, plan, and discuss. Among the things they discuss is what students are expected to learn, how to measure their learning, how to respond when minimal learning is evident, and how to respond when students know the content and skills being taught and they perform well. Rosa will now talk about the Curriculum Academy.
In the interest of continuing with the PLC process, I had an idea that when we write curriculum, we should also come together to do that at the same time. So this year, for the first time, we are all going to be writing curriculum together the week of June 26th through the 30th. That is the last week in June, and we will be here at PHS Learning Commons from eight in the morning till 12:00. The people who have already committed to do the work are doing extensive work, research, and studying prior to the week coming. So when they come here during that week, they will be ready to start writing, and then they have to have a set of deliverables that I call "by the end of the week" or "early the following week." So it'll be, as I call, COD. You know what that means? Cash on delivery. So the groups that are going to be writing this year are middle school and high school math and science. The math department, you know that we now teach Algebra I at the middle school, so in order to continue planning for that, they're going to come together and write curriculum that is going to be pretty much comprehensive, sixth through 12. Also, the science folks from the middle school and the high school are coming because they are going to be working on the new generation science standards, NGSS. So they are, right now, researching everything in terms of finding how NGSS is revolutionary in science, how we teach it, and the instruction in the classroom. Also, the English department at the high school is going to continue renewing some of their units of studies that they started this year, so they are going to continue the work. And also, the elementary grades are going to continue work from last year, and it's ongoing every single year. But for the first time, we are going to all be writing curriculum all together at the same time. This is really a report on its own, so we are just going to give you highlights of this report, but we welcome the opportunity to further explain at another time, and especially when we receive the new testing results, hopefully early summer. Okay? Oh, no, let's go back one more. This is tease, Tuanne. Do you remember New Child Left Behind? Well, the New Child Left Behind is gone, and now we have Esa. Well, the New Child Left Behind is gone, and now we have ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. And that is a new initiative that is giving states across the United States the opportunity to decide how they are going to look at their schools and create pretty much a report card for every school system. We have our first report card this year, it was shared with us in April, so we are going to show you what the report looks like. Very busy, so I am going to give you a hard copy because when you look at it in the screen, you're going to say, oh, my God, there is fifty million numbers and percentages and index and rates and all that. So I will give it to you. So over coffee is a good reading material because then you will be able to see everything in more detail. But this report will really come to life when we have the second report, so we can see the comparison on how we started, because this is the baseline year, and now with the test results that are gonna come over the summer, and actually, we are in the middle of testing right now at the middle school and some of the elementary schools. So that's gonna be the exciting report.
As Rosa mentioned, this is just the highlight of the report, and so we'll help, you'll have the opportunity to kind of look at it a little more in-depth, and we can, and as she mentioned, if you would like to talk about it further, we can at another date. As Rosa mentioned, the Every Child Succeeds Act has replaced No Child Left Behind, or it was known as NCLB. This new system is designed to help tell the story of how well a school or district is preparing students for success in college, career, and life. The new system helps districts track progress over time, it helps schools and districts identify areas of improvement, show where supports are needed the most, it helps districts recognize successes, it promotes transparency, and it satisfies federal and state requirements. The new system moves beyond test scores to provide a more holistic view. There are two main differences. The first addresses growth over time, while the second looks at other key indicators that influence student success. The next slide shows the twelve indicators. As you will note, there are some that we have always seen, achievement, graduation rates. But you will also notice that there are a few new measures, such as physical fitness and arts access. Rosa will further explain the indicators.
As you can see, this is the breakdown of all the indicators by school and level, like elementary, middle, and high, and then the combination of the middle school and high school. And notice that the percentages change from grades just because they have more indicators that they have to divide this big piece of the pie. Look at the high school, how many more percentages, the hundred percent is divided into so many more indicators, because there is other things that happen at the high school that not necessarily happened at the middle school or the elementary. So these indicators are, it's hard to figure out how the percentage works, but I believe there is another document that was shared with you where all the indicators are defined, and then the math problem is pretty much explained in the indicators. But as I said before, it will be very exciting just to see the two reports from last year and this year, just to see the comparison. We are above state average in all the indicators, and some of them way, way above state average. But of course, we are always going to be striving for more, so we are not going to just be happy with the result. We want to make sure that we're making adequate progress every single year.
So on the next two slides, they'll provide you with an overview of what the actual report card looks like. The one you are looking at now is the district-wide report card, and each of the five schools in the district received an individual report card. There are a few areas worth noting. Plainville performance is above state index in rates in most indicators, as Rosa mentioned. More than eighty percent of our students are on track for graduation, and we have reached the arts access target set by the state. This in particular is an access metric that evaluates the extent to which students in high schools participate in at least one arts course in the school year, in dance, theater, music, or the visual arts. This is related to the belief that every student needs and deserves a high-quality education in the arts. There aren't too many districts that can say the same as Plainville, as indicated in the state average. And lastly, eighty-eight point seven percent of our students are on track for graduation. Now Rosa will talk about a few things we are working on and a few of our next steps.
Of course, when we see the report, we immediately celebrate it, but we also try to identify the areas that are of most concern, and those are the areas that we are going to begin the work. First was identifying where we need to improve and how to make improvements. We have already met with Mr. Medic at the high school to start working and identifying areas that we're going to be working on, but also to try to make a specific plan on how we are going to address and make the changes as we go on. We noticed that some of the areas that we need to make improvement is chronic absenteeism. It's a little bit difficult to define because the state has many double standards, but we have a hundred and eighty days, so that means that students cannot be absent more than ten percent of that. So that equals to eighteen days. So students who are up to six to nine absences, the state is not even going to question the parents. That could be due to the student being sick, the student needed to go for a driver's license or for whatever reason. But after the ninth absence, the state needs to know why the child is absent. They require notification from doctors, and they require the schools to contact the parents just to say that they are in danger to be chronically absent from school. Other things that we also learned was that some of the codes, the absenteeism codes empower school that were categorized as this child being absent. For example, when a student is in in-school suspension, the state is saying that the student is absent from school. The school is in-school suspended. And when the student is in-school suspended, they might not be in the classroom, but we are providing all the assignments that are being done in the classroom simultaneously while they're here, and they have a person who is helping them out. So they are present in the school day. So we have made some adjustments like that. We also noticed that high-needs groups, and that means special education and English-language learners, we need to make sure that we provide all the necessary supports that they have and increase in some cases in order for them to be successful in some of the in-state assessments. We know that we need to have more growth in math and English-language arts, but we have also recognized that the way the questioning is said in the standardized testing and all the different layers and tiers within one question is making the difference whether the student really understands the question and knows what to do. In the superintendent showcase in that corner, I had six computers set up, and I had the test sample questions from the test, and I was hoping the adults would come and see the questions that the students need to answer. Only one father came for the math section and looked at the question and he said, "I don't think so." And then, but a lot of the kids throughout the night sat there, and they were actually very intrigued by the questions, and they were kind of challenging each other to answer the questions. The questions are difficult, and if you ever have an opportunity to look at the interim assessments or the sample questioning, it's not easy. So we need to work on how we word questions and the different tiers within a question. Sometimes a question has three and four different parts within one question. So we are going to be able to do those practice tests starting from September on. The science performance, we are moving from CAP testing to NGSS testing, and we are going to engage in the pilot of the pilot at the end of May. We were chosen, Rosa volunteered us, to participate in the test because I just wanted to know the types of questions and how well-prepared the students are, or they feel that they are. So we have a lot of work to do, and we will continue to fight the good fight. Any questions?
The little red and green arrows, are they just areas of...
The red arrows?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are areas that we feel we could be growing more and we just need to address.
Those are the areas that I've seen.
Yeah, those are the areas that I was just talking about as well.
Will the, I'm assuming this information is gonna be on the state website, all the different districts and...
Yes, if you go into the State Department of Education right now, this information is on the left-hand side, I believe it's the second tab, that is, it's called EdSite. And there you can go and search for Plainville, you can search all the schools within Plainville, you can see everybody around. Principal Medic actually is going to maybe roll out a challenge of all the Route Ten schools to see if we can beat them all. And we will.
Keeping it regional. And it's just, you know, I know you said it, but I'm gonna, having been here for a while, it's, this is, this is like, it's hard because this is the first time we're seeing this information in this format, and we have nothing to compare it to. All you can do is look at, obviously, the targets and the state average and get an idea, and at first glance, it, for most part, it looks really good. And so, you know, congratulations to everybody on that, I'm not surprised, and they work really hard. But it is, you know, for us, being layman and looking at this kind of stuff for the first time, when it's not in context of anything else, it's a little, it's a little...
Yes, it's difficult because there's so much information, and it's not just to see it like that, you really have to know what the indicators mean and how they are calculated. But this is just baseline data, this is our first report card in this fashion, so that's why we're really looking forward to all the test results to then the comparison, and then that is when we will really have good information to share. But at least you know what it looks like.
And you have a cheat sheet.
Yes, and then you have the cheat sheet of the indicators as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rosa, thank you, Tuana.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rosa and Tuana. They've taken some very complicated numbers and helped us to understand them. I sit on the CAPS Assessment and Accountability Subcommittee, and it's, much as I've heard a lot of this stuff, it takes a while for it to all sink in, and they've done a masterful job of helping us get a grasp on it. The last part of my report this evening, I would like to invite Vicky Jazinski up to the podium, Director of Special Education and People Services. Much like our general ed counterparts, the special ed department also has an accountability report, and Vicky's here to give us an overview. I want to caution the board that the way this special ed report works is, Vicky is reporting on data that is several years old, though we got it this school year, it reflects several years past of data, so that's just the way these reports are, but she'll speak to data from about two years ago.
Hi, good evening. Tonight I am gonna share the results of our special education annual report. It is published yearly in order to look at all of our compliance indicators for special education. As I have shared, and Dr. Brummett just shared, this performance report was based on data from the 2013 and 2014, and 2014, 2015 school years. So this data is already two to three years old. However, it's what we have, so that's what we'll use. The performance indicators were developed by the State Department of Education to ensure that all districts are complying with the many legal and procedural requirements in special education. I am pleased to report that Plainville continues to be in compliance when ensuring that all students are properly identified for special education, and that students in minority, racial, and ethnic groups are not over-identified as having disabilities. We have also ensured that students with disabilities are not disciplined more frequently than their non-disabled peers, and that all requirements are met for transitions into preschool from birth to three, and are met in order to prepare students for life after high school. In addition to the compliance indicators, the state also looks at high school dropout rates, participation rates for statewide assessments, and placement in the general education setting to the greatest extent possible. We are happy to report that we have either met the target or have made measurable progress in all of these areas as well. As you've heard a little bit about tonight, in 2015, the state of Connecticut was required by the Federal Department of Education in the Every Student Succeeds Act to identify a measurable criteria of student performance for special education students as part of the yearly report. After considering many possible indications of student performance, the state has chosen the third-grade English-language arts performance on state assessments as having the greatest correlation to overall school performance for students with disabilities. So this index score that you see there represents the fourteen, fifteen third-grade students and their English-language arts performance on the state tests, which I believe at this time was still CMT. So again, very much like the index scores that they've just talked about, it is not a clear percentage, it is actually an index score with many components going into it. The state has set the target index score of seventy-five for all high-need students, including special education students, and again, this represents our baseline data and the place to start. So we're hoping to get more information around that. In the next slide, I wanted to share that while not part of the overall performance report, our prevalence rate for students as in need of special education services continues to decline despite the state prevalence rate continuing to increase. We believe strongly that this is the result of our regular SRBI, or Scientific Research-Based Intervention Practices, across the district that provide early intervention and research-based interventions for students who have not yet made grade-level targets for learning. At the same time, the number of students placed in separate schools did increase by five students, which represents an almost two percent increase in the overall special education population. This is a result of the re- This is a result of the reopening of three group homes here in town for high school students, so students who are placed by DCF into Plainville schools, as well as students with significant behavioral issues whose needs just couldn't be met within our school system right now. This is an area that we are looking closely at to develop action plans that will allow us to enhance our in-district capacity to meet the needs of these students. So, the staff of the Special Education Department continues to benefit from a strong collaborative relationship with our general education colleagues. As Director, in collaboration with Leigh Anne Gomindl, our Supervisor for Special Education this year, we continue to lead the department's work in the following three areas. First, we want to continue to closely monitor the identification and placement of students with disabilities, as well as their performance data for both state and district learning targets. Second, we continue the collaborative professional development practices that have been so successful here in Plainville. The great example that you heard this evening was the spotlight on mental illness in schools and professional learning activities that focused on practices that all staff can implement to meet the needs of students with mental illness. And finally, we are going to continue to look very closely at those students placed in separate schools and to work, to develop the capacity of our in-district programs to better meet their needs. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Vicki.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Vicki, and all our presenters this evening, and that does conclude my report.
Thanks, Dr. Brummett. All right, moving on. We don't have any student representatives tonight. Let's see, Policy?
Mrs. Tyrell?
Policy Committee did meet, I'm gonna say, last week. There's a couple of first readings that you will see here, that we will discuss when we get there.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Brummett, do you have anything on turf?
I do not have any updates on turf right now.
High school report, Mr. White?
Yes, the Parent Advisory Council meets this Wednesday night. This will be kind of an important meeting because they have elections for next year's officers, because this year's officers' children are just about to graduate, and so that they are encouraging a lot of parent attendance at the meeting Wednesday night so that they will have just a good turnout. Also, they will be having their tag sale on the 13th of May, right here at the high school, and anyone that has any material that they would like to clean out of their house and offer up for sale at the tag sale, they can drop off on May 10th at the, just in the back of the high school where the auto repair shop is. And volunteers, if anybody's interested or hears about this, they are looking for volunteers for both picking up the articles and also for helping with the tag sale. They'll also have Krispy Kreme doughnuts on sale at the, at the tag sale, so that's an attraction, folks.
After our healthy food certification conversation, Krispy Kreme?
I don't want to get into healthy food on Krispy Kreme.
Is there anything, clusters or anything that they're not taking for the tag sale?
Not that I would, no. I mean, don't bring real junk, but...
You know, well, some people don't want electronics and that type of stuff.
Or sofas or...
Well, yeah, not large furniture, no.
There's no, or whatever. Thank you. Taflon, Nicole?
Yep, they had their meeting a few weeks ago, they talked about fundraisers, they had Flower Power fundraiser and a Mudson Childlets fundraiser. They made almost $1,400 off that. Their next meeting is May 18th, the same day as their bite prevention. They're having, people come to talk about how to be safe around animals and children. And they also talked about a recycling program they have, they're implementing for textiles, and I actually forwarded the information to you and Dr. Brummett, I believe.
Great, okay. I'll look for it. All right, thank you. Lyndon, Ms. Party?
Their PTO meeting will be Wednesday, May 10th, so I have nothing to report.
All right, middle school, Crystal?
Yep, we met on April 18th. Dr. Brummett visited with us and talked about the budget and about the Wheeler and the high school renovation and the paving. We had a successful fishing derby concession stand on Sunday. The weather was actually beautiful, a little windy, but it was a great event, and we made some money for our eighth-grade dance, which will be coming up on Friday, June 9th. And our meeting, next meeting, is tomorrow night, and we hopefully will have some new officers for next year.
All right, thank you. All right, the Wheeler April meeting was canceled, and the next meeting is going to be May 31st, 6:00 PM at the library. And I wasn't sure if Mrs. Puglisi said this, but the date of the Wheeler referendum is June 6th at the firehouse from 6:00 in the morning until 8:00 PM at night. Okay, correct? Mrs. Tyrell?
I was able to attend the last council, so I didn't have a...
Okay. Under the Chair's report, I just had a couple of things. Number one, I wanted to thank all the people, especially Mrs. Eschew at Lyndon, a bunch of us, including Mr. LaPage, a bunch of us, Board Member Sam, we went there on Friday for National, I believe it was National Children's Book Week? Do I have that right? And it was so cute because all the little ki, we all had two little, either, whatever grade you were in, the two little kids would come in, they escorted you to the classroom, and then you got to read them. I read like four books to the kids, I was reading to a kindergarten class, and they were great, and the teachers afterwards were very gracious, they gave us all gifts, and we had parting gifts at the front office, so it was, it was really a great day, and I just want to say thank you very much. Next, we had a, a bunch of us went a couple of weeks ago, we, or was it last week, the volunteer dinner that Sue Bradley puts on, and it was just great this year. She had our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Colangelo was sort of doing emceeing with her, they had an Italian singer that sang for us, the food was great, and she does a wonderful job every single year. We honored Kristen Constantini for Volunteer of the Year and Ann Bookie for Mentor of the Year. So, I just want to thank her and Tina and Lynn Davis for all that you guys do to make that a great event, so thank you. And lastly, I don't normally plug this, but, you know, we have our annual Memorial Day Parade, but this year it's extra special, they're going to be unveiling the Gold Star Monument, and, and all the families, I believe there's 70, that have been invited to the district. Representative Estes is going to be here, Dr. Pettit, Senator Martin will be speaking, so there's going to be more activity than usual, so hopefully everybody can come attend and show your support for Plainville. I'm sorry?
Hopefully it won't rain.
We're not talking about rain.
Have to stop sometime.
No, actually, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that, I was told based on last year, unless there's lightning, the show will go on even if it's raining, so just, I'm going to throw that out there. All right, so that's it. All right, under New Business, Board of Forum, does anyone have anything they wish to say? Go ahead, Cheryl.
Well, I can congratulate Lynn Davis, because everything that goes on in the school district, as the Cabe representative said, if we don't know it, if the community doesn't know it, then it didn't happen. So, we do appreciate that, besides regulating our temperature and making a saving so that we're either cold or hot, that you, you keep us, you keep us going with that. The, the reading event at Lyndon was, was great. Talia does a beautiful job organizing that and makes you feel very special for being there. I had a chance to be in Ms. Grabowska's first-grade class. I've never, rarely been in a classroom where the kids were just so, they just sat there, they were mesmerized, they were perfect. I'm going to buy them pencils or something and bring them, they were, they were cute, and she was, she was very gracious, and I have a lovely picture of the class. Donna and Jill's presentations are always one of my favorite things in the year because from, from the resources we offer, from the youngest and their families in town, it, it helps the kids through the rest of their school. It's, it's everyone, I don't think we can overstate how important it is that the socialization and what the parents and the children get from the Early Learning Center. Adult ed graduation is probably one of my favorite things in the year to go to because maybe somebody didn't have all of those opportunities when they were younger, and to stand up and come back and say, "I'm going to, I'm going to keep working on this and I'm going to keep doing this," and then to watch that success that night is, is always just a wonderful evening. I'm done talking. Thank you, so thank you.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Go ahead, Vicki.
Is there, there's something going on tomorrow night, some kind of a reading event in Norton Park, yes?
Yes, the One Book Picnic, 6 o'clock at Norton Park. What was it called?
White Fur Flying.
White Fur Flying, about a dog.
So, all three elementary schools have, have kids going?
They all read the same book, they all had kickoffs, and now they're going to celebrate tomorrow evening at Norton Park.
6 o'clock, 6 to 7, that's what I heard, okay. Somebody, is somebody...
I had an opportunity to read about three chapters out to one of the classes that were, it's, it's really, it's a good book, but there's also a lot of message in that book. I think it's one of the better choices that have been made to have everyone read that book because it just, it was an enjoyable book for the kids to read, but there is a lot of positive messages for the student in that, in that same reading.
Thank you, anyone else?
I'm sorry about it, Mr. White, you know, we got, we got off track here.
Yeah, we did.
I just wanted to congratulate Lynn, as always, I know last month, actually, Karen Viber from Bristol came over here, and when we told her you weren't here, she, she just packed up and left. That's funny. But, you know, congratulations, Lynn, as always, you, you work really hard, you make us look really good, and we always appreciate what you do. The Family Resource Network is, that's always a great presentation, and, you know, one of the things I've always thought is the most difficult job you're ever going to have in your life is being a parent. There's nothing that can even come close to comparing to it. So, what do we have for training? Nothing, you know, doesn't that make sense? And it is one of those things that, it's a rare, it's a rare opportunity for parents and families in town to be able to participate in that program. And it's been around for 20 years, so that means that when my three little kids were little, I didn't really have the, the Family Resource Network. So, we, my husband and I actually both went to these parenting classes, and where do we find our parenting classes? Through the Adult Ed Program. So, you know, even before PFRN was around, Adult Ed was backing them up there and helping us find not only the classes, but it was, it was the same kind of thing, where you met the same people for several weeks, and, you know, you kind of had a little camaraderie and tried to keep yourself sane. So, you know, both those programs have always been real strong programs for us and really great things in the town. And I just wanted to mention the referendum coming up for Wheeler, I hope that we can count on everyone to get out and support the, the project. It is definitely a project that's needed, it's also a project whose time has come, we are in a specific situation where we have some, we need to take advantage of the funding that's there, and after our window closes on June 30th, things could change at the state and our, and our funding would be gone and at least diminished. So, this is a really good opportunity, and, and it's not insignificant to say that the project here at the high school and the, the, you know, outside work that needs to be done around this building is, is important as well. So, I hope people understand that, and we can get people out to vote on June 6th. That was my other plug. And Mental Health Focus from, on the PLCs, I love that, that was, that was a great call and real important thing these days, touches every single student, and as usual, you guys are doing a great job. Now I'm done.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, moving on. Next, under New Business, we have, we're approving the Connecticut Institute of the Oak Hill contract, Sam, do you want to brief us on that?
So, Oak Hill rents space in our middle school, bottom floor of our middle school, this is an annual task of the Board of Ed to approve the contract, you have that in your packet. It's the same as last year, other than the annual rate, which we increased 3%, checked to the market, we feel it's a good rate, and so we increased it 3%.
All right, thank you, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the Oak Hill contract?
Second the motion.
Can I have a first and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, the next three items are our new policies. Mr. LaPage, you want to go over them first?
Sure, I'd be happy to. First, I'd like to thank the Policy Subcommittee members who attended the meeting on Monday night to review the policies, draft policies, and prior to submission to the Board of Education. The first policy is related to a mandated requirement based on statute that requires school lunch charging policies for the district, and it stresses the importance and timeliness of communication of such policies to families. This policy also clarifies that any debt owed to the school food services at the end of the year must be incurred by the, by the Board of Education and the school district to be paid to the food services from the Board of Education account, so that's something that is important to note. The Board of Education can continue, and would continue to, to attempt to collect those debts from families, but the food services account must be brought to zero at the end of the school year, that's statute. The second part of that really spells out the policies the district will follow regarding charging and how we, how we handle charging. They can get, they can get out of control if they're not kept in check as far as debt's running up pretty high if they're not, we don't have a system in place that, that we follow to collect the debt, so this policy really spells out even more clearly than it already was. And, you know, our primary goal is that all of our students are nourished, that they're healthy and they're getting a well-rounded meal so that they can think and learn, that's our, that's our number one goal. So, anything we can do as a district to make that happen while also keeping our, our budget in mind and, you know, helping parents to, in any way we can with, if they need help with filling out a free and reduced lunch form, getting the benefits that they're entitled to, because that automatically helps to reduce debt. Sometimes the parents don't realize that they're, that they're able to get free and reduced lunch, don't take advantage of those services. So, anything we can do on that end will be done as well, and that's, that's detailed in the policy. Any questions on that one? Okay. The second policy was related to a requirement through the FBI and security check fingerprinting criminal history record information, it's really about the security, the proper access, use, and dissemination procedures around that, that information. Now, some of this has been covered in the past, or currently, I should say, by our, our 4,000 policy around, around hiring practices. However, there's some new language and new requirements around handling of that information so that it's kept secure and confidential, and that we're bound to follow that. So, the FBI considers the Department of Education as non-criminal justice agencies, and there are certain requirements under CHRI, criminal history records, that we must, information that we must follow. So, that really, that really just keeps with the statute, so that our policy reflects the statute. In consultation with our Human Resources person, we are already fulfilling the requirements and statute regulations. There is a, there is a required training in there that we'll have to look at providing to her, but we can take care of that relatively easily. Any questions on that? And the final one, the final policy is our guidelines for alternative education settings, and they clearly spell out what an alternative education setting is. We do have some programs of that nature in districts, so through this policy, we're required to really just articulate several, several key pieces of information about those programs and make that public on the website and to families. The program's had to be Board of Education approved, so we'll be working on that while the Board of Education is well aware of our programs. I don't know that we ever went through a formal Board of Education approval process for, for alternative programs and connections program. They have to be transparent and well-defined, clear criteria and exit criteria, entrance and exit criteria, an accurate description about the programs, and then listed in our handbook, an alternative education handbook, and also listed on our website, so that's basically the, the essence of that policy. Any questions at all? And these are, we get our guidance on policy changes from Cabe, Connecticut Association Board of Education, so I'm not, I'm not bent to use my solid focus. You have to, you have a lot of choices to make.
He's trying to tweak himself. Come on.
There are, there are some choices and options that you can choose within those policies, and you do the best to make, make it fit the context of...
Sabriopades. I just want to, I just want to say, before we vote on them, I appreciate, obviously, all the Board members that come, but... but our two citizens that come, Tom or Carrie and Ruth, they are always so prepared. They read every word of every policy, no matter how many pages it is, and we have such, they, they bring such input. I leave there, I'm just fascinated at what they come up with and I think, "I could have never come up with that." So I really do appreciate for both of them. I know we had a third person that had left, but if we can fill that, that would be great. So I think the citizens always do, they want to be there and they do such a good job and, and I appreciate that, so... All right, so we just need a motion for D.
You want a motion for all three of them?
Oh, you can do all three, is that okay? Joan, where are you? Three, all three is fine, okay.
We'll motion for a first read for D, E, and F.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and then I go right, we go right into the next motion to postpone, correct?
Right.
Okay. Do you want to do that, Becky?
Second on that, too.
So Becky, you're going to, you're going to...
I'll motion to postpone.
Okay. Foster, a second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda, can I have a motion?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as circulated to us.
Second. All right, I have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you and have a good evening.